I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order, please.
I'll take roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Vice Mayor VaCaro.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here.
Thank you.
We do have a quorum. The invocation this evening will be led by Leon Robertson from Cornerstone Apostolic Church. Pastor, if you'd come forward, please. Sorry, we don't have one. So, Councilwoman Bertani, would you lead us in an invocation, please?
Sure. Let us pray. Lord God Almighty and everlasting Father, thank you for bringing us in safety to this new day. Protect us with your mighty power that we may not fall into sin nor be overcome by adversity, and in all that we do direct us to the fulfilling of your purposes for our lives individually and collectively as a community. Please bless this world with peace. Bless the folks in the Ukraine who are just suffering. Bless us to pray for your peace on this earth according to your will. We ask all these blessings in the name of Jesus the Christ, our risen Lord and Savior, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
And Councilwoman Tim, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance to our flag, please?
Certainly. Would you join me in the pledge, please?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we turn now to council reports, please. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, everyone. It's good to be back live again after a couple of months. Couple of, just really quick, as Councilwoman Bertani just said in her prayers, I know our thoughts and prayers go out to the citizens of Ukraine, everybody over there, that block over in Europe. God, never thought we'd see another war over there, but we're seeing it right now. Also, I know the governor is lifting the mask mandate for schools, I believe on March 12th. I think we still need to be diligent about it, but I'm glad he is because having gone into the schools over the last year and a half, I know it's tough for those kids, it's tough for the teachers to try to police it, it's almost impossible, actually. But, so I think they're all really happy. And that's really all my report, Mr. Mayor, and I'm just, like I said, glad to be back live and welcome everybody.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bertani, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to report out on, well, first of all, I want to remind everyone that the city council retreat is scheduled for March 11th, that's a Friday, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and on March 12th, the following morning, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. This council retreat is an opportunity for the residents of this city to help advise the city council in our policymaking function. So, it's a great opportunity to come out and have more in-depth conversations about the issues of concern to you and advise us in our policymaking. So, if you can attend one or both of those sessions, that would be great. The session will be in person, the city council will be at the police training facility for the sessions, and I have asked the city manager to make Zoom participation available to the extent possible. And I don't know if you've been able to do that, but, and you don't have to advise now, but just let us know. Because I know that residents, while the mask mandate is being lifted and the restrictions are easing, there are still many people in the community who do not feel comfortable or cannot, you know, attend public events. And this event is important enough, in my opinion, to warrant Zoom participation to the extent possible. And then, just really quickly, I want to report out on the Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield Can. We've had great meetings discussing topics that also will be brought to the city council retreat by the clergy in Fairfield through Fairfield Can. And the three top issues identified by the Clergy Action Network for consideration at the city council retreat are, number one, homelessness, number two, affordable housing, number three, rehabilitation services in the city of Fairfield for folks who are reintroduced back into the community and those who are in need of rehabilitation who are currently on the streets. And so, we had some great conversations, the mayor joined us, the city manager joined us, and we're looking forward to bringing, the clergy bringing those issues to bear on us at the city council retreat. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moy, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really good to be back here. And Councilwoman Bertani is correct, there are some people who cannot attend our public meetings, so I hope you're watching us from home. I want to thank you for tuning in. I had a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Most importantly, I mean, we all know that Russia has invaded the Ukraine, and this week, the state legislature is considering a bill that would divest the state from anything having to do with Russia. And that comes down to about $1.5 billion, and that's with PERS and STIRS and other things. So, because we are the home of Travis Air Force Base, and because we have C-17s who, that are and have taken supplies to the Ukraine, I think it's incumbent upon us in the city of Fairfield to also look at divesting anything that we may have as far as public money in Russia. And I know that might be a little bit of a task, maybe not too big, probably not a ton of money, but I would ask that my colleagues join me in asking staff to look at that and bring it back as soon as possible so we could go ahead and vote on it. It's kind of urgent. The more pressure that we can put on Russia and Vladimir Putin, the safer our city will be because we do have Travis inside our city, and the world will be. And we all want peace, but we need to move for that. I would also like us to, three things, I'd like us to write a letter supporting the divesting in the, to the state and to our legislators. We would send that to Senator Dodd, I've already called him. And so, I'd like us to write a letter, have the mayor do that. And then, also, for us to look here in Fairfield inside and see if we have anything invested in Russia. Now, you know, we need to have the caveat that we have to make sure that we are not hurting any of our employees with PERS and so on. And that's something also that the legislature is looking at. And we also, the third thing that I would ask the mayor to do, since he sits on all of these bodies, is to do the same for the Slano Transportation Authority, the Slano County Water Agency, and the sewer district. So, that's what I'm doing, and I'm calling on all of the cities in our county and the county itself to do the same. We shouldn't be investing in Russia anyway because of their known abuses, you know, historically and up to now. They're killing children and women and others who are not engaged in this war, and we have to do everything we can to stop it. So, I would just ask if somebody would join me in saying that we would like staff to do that.
Yes, I will join you, and we will do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then, the last thing is that I would ask Mr. Mayor that we close the meeting today in honor of Dr. Mitchell, who's passed away from cancer. And he was a veteran, and he served at Travis Air Force Base, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you know him very well. And, so if we could do that, I would appreciate it.
Indeed, we will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Panduro, please. Your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So, I just wanted to report back, myself and a couple of my colleagues attended a very exciting groundbreaking. So, it was the groundbreaking of the Mid-Penn Housing over at Fairhaven Commons, so located over off of Sunset Avenue. So, it is going to be 72 affordable housing units with 44 for very low income, which is going to include supportive housing. So, it's a really great opportunity for a community to move forward with regards to keeping families in homes and individuals as well with regards to if they need extra assistance, that area, that program is going to be able to keep them inside in their homes and then help them to move forward. So, it was just really exciting, and I know it took a lot of collaboration between county and city, so just thank you to everyone in all the departments, county and city, that were able to bring the funds together and the collaboration together to be able to break ground on this great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tim, your report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think it's pretty much been covered tonight, and I concur with Cap Moy and your second, and obviously Mid-Penn, and enough said, but thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Tonison, your report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just be brief. I attended a meeting for the downtown striping, and we are changing the downtown right now, or, and David, maybe if you can chime in if you need to. We're not moving dirt right now, but we are going to re-stripe. We are going to have four one-way streets, Webster to the north, Jackson to the south, Taylor to the north, and Great Jones to the south. We're going to have a net gain of, just on those side streets, the one-way streets, 19 parking spaces. We're going to remove the stop signs, and, I mean, remove the lights and put in stop signs on all of the corners where the lights are at. We're going to have more parking that's going to be in front of the businesses, which I'm sure will make a lot of the businesses happy and a lot of the consumers. But this is supposed to happen mid-May-ish, so just look forward to that, and when you see things going on town with the striping, now you'll know what it is. That's all from me, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. And I should like to report that it's remarkable how the city of Fairfield is able to attract some of the finest people you'll meet anywhere in the world. And today, there was a wonderful retirement ceremony for Don Shepherd from the Police Department, Police Dispatch records, and 34 years of service to the city of Fairfield. And what makes that so significant for me, of course, is the realization that other retirees come back for those retirement ceremonies. It's just a very, very warm, welcoming kind of feeling that you know that you're in a good city with good people and public servants who really do care about the city of Fairfield. Mr. City Manager, your report, please. First of all, any changes to the agenda?
No, no changes to the agenda. You know, Councilwoman Bertani hit on one of mine with the retreat upcoming next Friday and Saturday, hope to see folks there, but this is also a very meeting-full month. So, next Tuesday, we have a special meeting on general plan update, then we have the retreat, then on the 15th, we have a regular city council meeting, and then we have another special meeting on March 29th, which is a follow-up to homeless services. And then, the one other item that I was just going to point out today was that we have a new employee in the city manager's office. I think most of you have had an opportunity now to meet her. Anna Giles is our new assistant to the city manager. Anna, maybe just stand up and wave. And we're very excited to have her on board, and especially me, now that I've got another person to sort of throw some special projects at. So, Anna, welcome aboard, and that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. And our city attorney, Mr. Lynn, your report, sir.
I have nothing to report out. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Kirk, your report, please.
I don't have a report. I just also want to say my heart is broken over what's going on in Ukraine, and, anyway, my heart goes out to everyone there.
And Madam Kirk, we have one presentation tonight. If you would read the title, please.
Proclamation declaring March as American Red Cross Month, and our presenter is Councilmember Panduro.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor. And if I can please have Ms. Nanette Shamaya from Red Cross, she is the Committee Partnerships' Coordinator of Slano County, Pamela Ingram and Susan Reese, if you can please come up while I read this. Thank you. Okay, so this is proclaiming American Red Cross Month for March 2022. Whereas in times of crisis, people in Fairfield come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas, despite the ongoing challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need. Whether it was responding to this year's record-breaking wildfires, horrific tornadoes, extreme winter storms, cold waves, or summer heatwaves, volunteers continue to roll up their sleeves to give blood when our country faced a severe blood shortage. And whereas, the American Red Cross has a long history of helping our neighbors in their time of greatest need by delivering shelter, care, and hope during disasters, making our community safer through its life-saving Home Fire Campaign, providing life-saving blood, teaching skills that save lives, and supporting military veterans and their families. And whereas, last year in Slano County, American Red Cross volunteers helped 94 families affected by home fires by providing emotional support, addressing immediate needs, and helping families recover with emergency financial assistance or community resources, collecting 326 units of life-saving blood, hosting 23 blood drives, teaching skills that save lives to 5,737 community members, providing international humanitarian aid, and supporting 563 military members and their families. And whereas, Red Cross volunteers deployed 552 times, dedicating 61,930 volunteer hours to assist neighbors in California and around the country during 41 different disaster relief operations of all sizes, including wildfires in Oregon and California in Hurricane Ida. And whereas, during last year's red flag warnings complicated by the public safety power shot-offs, American Red Cross worked tirelessly besides its government and community partners to coordinate preparedness efforts and develop response plans for high fire danger by putting volunteers on standby to open evacuation shelters, centers, shelters, and staff, and staff the emergency operations center. And whereas, everyday people in our community depend on the American Red Cross, whose life-saving mission is powered by the devotion of volunteers, generosity of donors, and partnerships of community organizations. We dedicate the month of March to all those who support its vital work to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Now therefore I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do proclaim March 2022 as American Red Cross Month in the city of Fairfield, and urge all citizens to volunteer with the American Red Cross and support those in need.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Nanette Shamaya, and, as she said, the Community Partnerships Coordinator. And I have today with us Pam Ingram, who's in charge of our DAT program, which DAT means to you all, the folks that if there's a fire in town, the DAT group responds immediately. They go out and help those in need as far as any kind of services that they need immediately. That's what she's in charge of. Susan's, she's new with us, she's in charge of our feeding now, so big task as well as far as, you know, when we do sheltering and whatnot, we rely on partners and whatnot to feed those in need while we're in those kind of environments. But we want to thank you very much for declaring March as Red Cross Month. Tonight, I'd like to, that proclamation pretty much covered most everything the Red Cross does, and when I first joined, I had no idea the scope of what Red Cross does. But that kind of covered most of it. Tonight, I'd like to share a special program we have to save lives, just take a few minutes, the sound of the alarm fire program, home fire program. And basically, what that means is that the disasters that the American Red Cross responds to mostly are home fires. And every day, seven people die in home fires, most often in homes without working smoke alarms. And that's why we launched this program. Throughout the year, the Red Cross volunteers and community partners organized and helping families recover with emergency financial assistance or community resources, collecting three-hundred-and-twenty-six units of life-saving blood, hosting twenty-three blood drives, teaching skills that save lives to five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven community members, providing international humanitarian aid, and supporting five-hundred-and-sixty-three military members and their families. And whereas, Red Cross volunteers deployed five-hundred-and-fifty-two times, dedicating sixty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty volunteer hours to assist neighbors in California and around the country during forty-one different disaster relief operations of all sizes, including wildfires in Oregon and California in Hurricane Ida. And whereas, during last year's red flag warnings complicated by the public safety power shot-offs, American Red Cross worked tirelessly besides its government and community partners to coordinate preparedness efforts and develop response plans for high-fire danger by putting volunteers on standby to open evacuation shelters, centers, shelters, and staff, and staff the emergency operations center. And whereas, everyday people in our community depend on the American Red Cross, whose life-saving mission is powered by the devotion of volunteers, generosity of donors, and partnerships of community organizations. We dedicate the month of March to all those who support its vital work to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Now, therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do proclaim March 2022 as American Red Cross Month in the city of Fairfield, and urge all citizens to volunteer with the American Red Cross and support those in need. Congratulations.
My name is Nanette Shamaya. I'm, as she said, the Community Partnerships Coordinator, and I have today with us Pam Ingram, who's in charge of our DAT program, which DAT means to you all, the folks that if there's a fire in town, the DAT group responds immediately. They go out and help those in need as far as any kind of services that they need immediately. That's what she's in charge of. Susan's, she's new with us. She's in charge of her feeding now, so big task as well, as far as, you know, when we do sheltering and whatnot. We rely on partners and whatnot to feed those in need while we're in those kind of environments. But we want to thank you very much for declaring March as Red Cross Month. Tonight, I'd like to, that proclamation pretty much covered most everything that Red Cross does. And when I first joined, I had no idea the scope of what Red Cross does, but that kind of covered most of it. Tonight, I'd like to share a special program we have to save lives, just take a few minutes, the Sound the Alarm Fire Program, Home Fire Program. And basically, what that means is that the disasters that the American Red Cross responds to mostly are home fires. And every day, seven people die in home fires, most often in homes without working smoke alarms. And that's why we launched this program. Throughout the year, the Red Cross volunteers and community partners organize Sound the Alarm events in high-risk neighborhoods to install free smoke alarms and help families create home fire escape plans. And if the worst happens, the Red Cross is often among the first on the scene after a home fire, like I just described, offering emotional support, helping families find a place to stay, and assisting with their recovery. We are celebrating the Red Cross Sound the Alarm campaign, which what we do is rally around thirty thousand volunteers and partners to install one-hundred thousand free smoke alarms and help families create home fire escape plans in one-hundred high-risk communities nationwide. So, on May fourteenth, Solano County volunteers will be joined by the fire districts and community partners during our Sound the Alarm Home Fire Event at the Casanova Mobile Home Park. These services are free and available to all who need it. I'll be leaving some information on how anyone can contact our team in Solano and how they can sign up for a free smoke alarm as well. I was going to go into more detail about Red Cross, but I think that proclamation pretty much covered it. We're just thrilled to be here and for you to recognize us today. We want to thank the citizens of Fairfield, the city council, and your town staff who work closely with the American Red Cross. So, let's sound the alarm together about fire safety and help save more lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We turn now to public comments. Madam Kirk, if you would, please.
Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me prior to the time for public comment on that item. And we also have people watching or viewing the meeting via Zoom, so please use the raise-your-hand feature or press star nine on your phone to request to speak. And speakers are limited to three minutes per item. I do have two speakers here in person. The first is Jeff Traeger.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I want to bring you up to date what's going on at the Downtown Theater. We just came off two, in a matter of three weeks, we came off two sold-out shows at the Downtown Theater, and I'm telling you, after two years and not being able to put anything on there, it is so great to look up in the balcony and see a full house. It was, we had, the last one last Saturday night, we had a tribute to Johnny Cash's ninetieth birthday, and what a crowd we had. It was just wonderful. Coming up on the twelfth of this month, we have one of the most successful and popular bands out of the, groups out of the seventies from Philadelphia, the Delphonics. They had, Jesus, I think they had four or five hits, top ten hits, in the early seventies. So, they'll be coming back for the second time. The last time they played, we sold out. And then on the eighteenth, we have some of, five of Solano County's finest performers in a production, one of the longest-running and funniest productions on Broadway, None Such. So, that'll be on the eighteenth. So, that's what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Our next speaker will be Jack Batson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jack Batson, citizen of Fairfield. Last council meeting, an advocate of growth came here and noted that on the website of the Orderly Growth Committee, the last sentence concerning Fairfield was that "we apparently didn't object to the provision of services, city services, beyond the urban limit line, beyond our city limits." That was on the public record. So, I felt it was important for me to come here as an advocate, a member of the Orderly Growth Committee, to simply say and set the public record straight that we do object very strongly to the provision of services to county development. We hope that you understand the gravity of what you appear to be about to do, and that would be to seriously compromise the Orderly Growth Plan that the county initiated in 1985 that has prevented growth in the county, giving the county agriculture, and of course, the city things here of jail and so on. It's worked very well for Solano County. We have a really nice county. We were the first one to control growth in the state of California, we believe. Other counties, including Napa, followed us. I hope you don't trash that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anthony Russo.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm the advocate that Mr. Batson mentioned. Last week, I got a phone call from Jack. He said that someone hacked into his Orderly Growth website in January, December, January, February, and altered the language that he just mentioned. And he asked me if I knew anything about it, since I was the one who read it at the city council meeting. I assured Jack I didn't have anything to do with that. On Sunday afternoon, I got a call from someone who said, "Anthony, do you know you have been indirectly accused of hacking into Orderly Growth's website and altering this language?" And I said, "No," but I am now, so I contacted Jack, and I asked him to explain, and he's refused. So, I know you have an email. I understand it is, it mentions me. Someone certainly feels that indirectly accuses me of the one hacking into their site and changing this language. That's ridiculous. I didn't do it. I wouldn't condone it. I don't know anybody who did. You all know me. If you have any questions, give me a call. With all the stuff going on in the world, this seems so trivial, and I thought over and over about whether I should show up here tonight, but I really felt like I needed to defend myself. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Brian, is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak?
We have no speakers on Zoom at this time.
Okay, thank you.
That will be the end of public comments. We'll turn to the consent calendar. Madam Kirk, if you would, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. I do have two people here that would like to speak on item nine, which is on consent.
We'll take item nine first, please.
Okay, first we'll have Theda Peck.
Good evening. First off, the item nine has to do with the Landscape Maintenance District, and I live in the Paradise Valley, number eleven. On your agenda report, it indicates that during the town hall meetings, residents were given the opportunity to look at the options of a loan, but the problem with this is it implies that all residents were informed of this meeting and/or the loan and the process and what was voted on, and that's just absolutely not true. Majority of the residents within at least Paradise Valley have no knowledge that there's a deficiency in the Landscape Maintenance District budget. So, I think that is, that comment is incorrect. The budget, which is under, we have a deficit. I kind of want to know, why do we have it? This should have been looked at and observed years ago. It's a Prop 218 issue, and now we're going to take another year to get it fixed, and you guys have voted on doing, giving us a loan to help pay for the contract. I would like to have somebody held accountable for the lack of budget oversight, whether it's the auditors in the accounting, the finance department, or the Public Works, whoever deals with these districts and their budgets, they should be held accountable and made to answer to the people why they are not doing their job. The loan, I think it was voted on. I think there's a Prop 218 issue, because if the Prop 218 that increases our assessment fees does not pass next year, you now have placed a burden of debt on the residents within the district without their consent. So, I think there's a whole little issue violation of Prop 218 that needs to be looked at before that loan goes into effect. Got that, got that. I would like the attorney to reinstate, to restate, the loan usage criteria that which was mentioned in a previous meeting as to whether or not it can be used for general benefit or specific benefit, and that's that loan that was voted on. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I'll defer to the mayor. This is a public comment at this time, so unless directed by the council or the mayor to respond, usually, city attorney will not respond to a public request, since I'm your attorney, not hers.
Then, Mayor, why don't we, if I may, then why don't we pull it for further discussion? We can listen to what her questions are, and then we can pull it and discuss it.
Generally, that's the only, that's the last thing I have, is it was stated that the loan could only be used for general benefit areas where the assessment fee is only, should be only used for specific benefit, and the maps need to be redrawn, because we shouldn't be paying for general benefit areas. So, there's a whole kind of conflict right there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rick Johnson.
Good evening. I am part of a group of residents that are working with the city to get our landscape shenanigan taken care of. Our desire is to get it resolved. Our desire is to redo through 218 a good district that'll take care of itself and that will look good. That's our goal, and we are working with Public Works. We're working with our city manager and the council to get us in that direction. I am rising today to tell you that I do not support the loan at this time. We need to hold off. We need to do some additional work. We need to gain some additional information. It wasn't until yesterday that the information from the city attorney was identified to be incorrect from the last meeting. It was one-hundred-and-eighty degrees out, and he's not an expert, but he does work with someone at the office who is. So, if we have more time to identify the issues that are at hand, I think less errors such as that will take place. The information you were given was that it could not be spent on the areas that we needed. It's pretty serious. That was the reason for the loan. So, the other reason that I'm not supporting it is, at this time, I am not convinced the 218 will be successful. As we hear that not enough people are even yet aware, which is our goal as our group, we're emailing people daily, we're pointing towards Civic Mike, we want people to join, we want to get you on Facebook, we want people involved. The downside of that, if people look at the facts and they look at the budgets, they look at the expenditures, they look at the fact that District Seven was into its reserve at least the last couple of years, and no bells or whistles were fired off. When you get into that mode of eating your seed stock, you don't have a crop coming in in the future. And we do not need to rush into this, and I'm not saying we are rushing, but there's so much we need to understand. There's so much more we need to get out to get people involved in a positive way, and we have some negative things that we need to get past. And we can't just say we don't want to point fingers or we don't want to worry about what has happened in the past. We have to solve those. We have to come up with new ways of doing things. As Mr. Mayor, in his very good apology to the people, he said, "We need to do things differently." We're not doing anything differently yet in a very overt way, and that will truly, truly help. We need the credibility of this body and this city to be raised so that our 218 efforts are successful. I believe they can be. I would not bet on them right now, but I do want to continue working for that end. And I want to work with you, and I want to continue to work with Public Works, people that are working very hard. My time is over, so I will finish that up, and respect you. And we're just asking you to demonstrate respect for the residents. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a statement?
Please.
So, it's, I agree with our speakers, and it sounds like, at this point, this contract is not ripe for final disposition. There's still some significant questions regarding the use restrictions for the funding, and so I think that, you know, I guess, I don't know procedurally, do I make a motion that we pull this item from consideration on the consent calendar and come back, and maybe even have another full council discussion after obtaining some answers or resolutions to the questions that are pending right now.
So, to answer the procedural question, council member, the motion, or the item has already been pulled from consent by virtue of taking public comment.
Okay.
If you wanted to table the item, the proper motion that you could do is just move to table it. It would be treated like any other motion. You would need a second. Then you could discuss that motion, whether or not to table it, and then call for a vote. You could also just let the item go. Somebody could move to approve it, and it could be defeated if not enough people vote for it. But those are your two options in terms of...
I move to table item nine on the consent calendar.
So, we have a motion and a second. Councilman Tim, you had a comment?
Yeah, further discussion is, I want some information tonight, and I think we have that information, because we haven't even had a staff presentation, because if we table it, now we put it off for another two weeks. So, I'd rather hear the information tonight, and then I can make a decision based upon what I hear. So, I just don't want to pull it. I want to actually talk about it. And I guess just defer it. It might get pulled, but I want to hear the info first.
So, at this point... Oh, sorry. Excuse me. But procedurally, you have a motion and a second, so you can discuss that motion, but then you do have to vote on it. The other thing I'll clarify that I apologize, I didn't tell Councilwoman Bertani, at this point, it's a motion to table for an undisclosed date. You do have the option to table it for a certain period of time, or if you leave it as the motion is, it's just a motion with no new date to table, which means the mayor, at his discretion, or two other council members could decide when to put it back on the agenda. But if the motion were to pass as is, it would be tabled for a date uncertain, and it could either just die, like no one would ever bring it back, or the mayor could bring it back, or two other council members could bring it back whenever they decide they want to put it back on. Or optionally, you could give further instructions to staff, either through the mayor or individual council members and staff could work accordingly. And you've already kind of given some direction on that, but it was not in the formal motion. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, understood.
Chuck, would you speak up a little bit, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. The questions were, is if you table one, do you table them all, or is it only this district that the people went tabled? Like I said, there's, I'd rather hear the information first. We could decide to table it after we hear the info, or take action, or take no action, or whatever, but what I'm afraid is, is so what happens if there's no action taken tonight, and the clock is ticking, because they're still providing service and they're still being paid, and when the money runs out, then what happens to the service? So, there's a lot of questions around it. But I'm very uncomfortable about just table one or table them all, so.
So, if I may, to the council, this council has always been very good at working collaboratively through consensus, and I've never seen you all get bogged down in procedure, so I don't think now's a good time to start. Technically, having a motion out there, you are supposed to discuss only the contents of that motion and vote, but Councilmember Bertani could just say, you know, "Let's just discuss this, and the motion's there. We can discuss the substance of it," and then vote. I mean, I don't think anyone, we're not going to forget that she made the motion. That's up to her. The other thing is to clarify... The other thing is to clarify, right now, the motion is to table the entire resolution, so it would be everything, all three districts.
And that's the motion, and we do have a second. Do you want to put a date certain?
Yeah, let me amend my motion to table and put at least a date where this will, a date certain that this will come back before the full city council for full discussion, and hopefully have some of the many questions that we have answered by that time, or at least fully vetted by that time. So...
Yeah, I'll just, I'll jump in here. We've got staff here, you know, Mr. Johnson had identified some of his concerns to us. We've taken a look at those, we're ready to provide city council with a presentation and some additional information tonight, if that helps to inform your decision on whether or not to table.
But then I'd also like to have the residents have an opportunity to weigh in on that information as well, and that may not be possible tonight, because, you know, there are only a few residents here.
Yeah, just to clarify, we had a public workshop in the lead up to the meeting that we brought to you, an action on whether or not to do a loan. Now, I don't know off the top of my head the exact numbers, I would estimate there was somewhere in the, you know, 40 resident range that attended the work session, and that was in response to a mailer that was sent to every address within each of the three subject LMDs. And what you ultimately decided at your last meeting was to bring forward this resolution that's before you tonight, to provide a loan to these districts, to provide until June 30th of 2023, so we're not talking until June of this year, but June of next year, in order to fully satisfy the information needed through our engineering consultant, who is going to be reviewing the districts, reviewing the general versus special benefit, ensuring that the assessments, you know, recalculating what assessments are necessary, and the loan provides the LMDs the funding necessary in order to restore the level of maintenance that was suspended effective January 1st of this year. And so the loan, by its very nature, the purpose of the loan was to provide us another, what is that now, 14 months, or 15 months, to engage with residents, to discuss these issues, to discuss what the 218 process looks like, as well as what that rate increase would look like. And so more, our Public Works staff is here and prepared to talk to some of the specifics of exactly what that contract, the contract with the consulting engineer has been approved already by city council, that work is ready to commence. This loan would be the last piece of that, so that we could recommence the higher level of maintenance that they have been used to in these, in these districts, as we embark on the 218 process and the review of the districts.
And what I'm simply saying is that I don't think another 30 days or so for reconsideration and a relook at some of the issues would hurt anyone. I think that the cost benefit analysis, in my opinion, would be that more residents would be informed, and at this point, I don't see any need to race through this process. If we take another 30 days for our residents to weigh in, how does that, you know, how does that hurt us in any way compared to how it may hurt the community? So my motion stands.
Do you want me to do a roll call vote?
Yeah, roll call vote, please.
Oh, well, you're all, you're all here.
Okay. Thumbs up, or thumbs down?
Can, can the motion be repeated? I'm sorry, I got a little lost.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend a roll call, because you don't make motions to table very often, so just, if you're okay with it, I would do a roll call vote. The motion is to table this to a date uncertain, which basically means a yes vote means you are saying...
I amended the motion.
Oh, to what, how many days?
To 30 days.
Thirty days. Did you say at least 30 days, or 30 days?
Excuse me?
Did you say at least 30 days, or 30 days?
At least 30 days.
Thank you. Apologize for that. So a yes vote is to vote in favor of tabling it for at least 30 days. A no vote is to not table it, and then you still have to come back to the resolution and discuss it, and either motion, move to vote for it or not.
But David, you're saying, David Gasaway, you're saying that we have the staff here tonight to answer these questions now?
Correct.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
No.
Councilmember Tonison?
No, just because I want to hear it tonight.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
No.
And Mayor Price?
No.
So it's three yeses to four nos.
So then I would assume you now want staff to provide some information. Okay. And here comes our Public Works staff right now, so we'll have Chris Lewis and Ryan Pung and Nevin from Public Works.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Ryan Pung and Nevin, I'm the Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer. As Mr. Gasaway alluded to, some of the questions that the residents have posed tonight as it relates to the special versus general benefit is going to be included as part of the contract that we have executed with our consultant. So MBS is currently engaged and working through kind of an evaluation of the LMD, not just 11, but 7 and 13 as well, to kind of look at the parcels, look at the maintenance levels, look at the funding, and kind of look at what that special versus general benefit calculation would need to be.
So you're saying that that's currently under evaluation right now, or is it completed?
It's not completed. We just executed that contract in February. We anticipate that work to be completed in the upcoming months. That was one of the core questions, as it relates to the community engagement in the town hall. We did mailer, as Mr. Gasway alluded to, to all the residents included within LMD 11, 13, and 7. In aggregate, there was probably 60 attendees at those meetings. In total, there was two separate meetings that we had, so on average, about 30 folks attended. For context and purposes, how many parcels are there, Chris, roughly?
In Paradise Valley, I think it's about 1,000.
It's about 1,000 parcels in Paradise Valley, LMD 11, property owners, and about 40 folks attended that meeting.
So I guess what I'm asking is, so are we in effect making a decision on information that is not, is not certain? It's in flux, specifically with respect to the use restrictions on the loan funds?
One of the things in working with our city attorney's office, we were able to clarify that the use of funds will be for internal streets, raise that level of service within the landscaping specifically, so not just the general benefit, but it's also going to be for those streets as well. The concerns of the residents will be taken care of. So Paradise Valley, Paris Valley Drive, those internal streets will be taken care of as part of this loan amount.
But that information is not final tonight.
We were able to confirm that with our city attorney's office, that that, in fact, that is the intent of the loan, the 130,000, that's going to be executed with the resolution.
Okay.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, so I'm actually going to look out here. Does that answer your question, or a specific benefit, or a general benefit?
Yes, I think that's, if you're saying that...
Ma'am, would you come to the mic? Thank you. So people in TV land can hear you.
Yes, if he's restating what, that the loan is going to be used for the specific benefit and the general benefit, then that answers the question, because that's opposite of what the city attorney said in that meeting. But if they found a way to use for both, because it's not fair to have us pay for a loan, the residents, that's supposed to be for specific, but is being paid only for general, that's not what it's...
Right, okay, I get that, but it answers the question, so, so you've heard my question, you've heard her answer, so we'll pay both a general and a specific benefit, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Also, too, I just wanted to point out that one of the reasons why we're bringing it immediately after the February 1st kind of town hall, this loan option, was the work is seasonal, so you could look outside your window, you could see the weeds coming up, you could see some of the bushes that need to be cleared out. So we want to start that work as quickly as possible, so we can get ahead of it, start doing some of that herbicide and pesticides that need to happen now. So with approval tonight, we could start that work as quickly as, you know, April 1st or mid to late March.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments, colleagues?
Yeah, why don't you share what you shared with me? So he's worried about...
The number of people involved indicates a very, very low participation, and the people we are talking to who are participating are very, very unhappy with the whole situation. They likely may not vote for a positive change in the 218. That's why I'm saying the risk is very, very high, and the dollars involved are crucial. Councilman, Councilperson Bertani, your neighbors are going to be paying $100,000 a year extra for five years if we do not pass 218, which is substantial. That comes out of then, the reduced budget that will remain in place if 218 is not accomplished. Their cut budget will then be further cut by $100,000 for five years. So the walk needs to be pretty slow on this process to get a positive result, not saying that it's impossible, but all indications are not positive at this time. And I'm going to work, I'm knocking on doors, I'm emailing, I want people to get on board. We've got people that are working hard, that are answering questions, that are confusing at times, and we're all overcoming past errors that have taken place in the way the budgets have been operated. So as people learn more, they become less happy. That's the downside. It's usually when people learn more, they become more involved. We're having to walk them through in doing that. And we are having a community meeting with our committee Friday at 5:00 at Legends and Heroes. If there's any council person who would like to attend, this is a group of about eight people that are residents, some are former employees, some are former members of the Landscape Committee that existed, I don't think it exists anymore, with lots of information. We've got really good people that are on board, trying to make it happen, but they're also very realistic. We have HOA presidents from, our district alone is there, and he's got over 800 residents that he works with. So that invitation is wide open, and I would love to have anybody join us at that point. And then you can ask questions, and a real good interchange could take place.
So Rick, do you think that, that tabling this issue for at least 30 days would facilitate what you just said?
Yes. It gives us a chance to...
Inform more people...
Inform more people, and really, full court press it.
That's the foundation of my motion. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Vicaro, please.
I'd like our city attorney to respond to that.
Yeah, I didn't want to respond directly to Mr. Johnson, but I did want to, I think his point is well taken. I disagree with him that I was an heir, but I think I need to remind the council that the role of the city attorney is not a policymaker. It is to advise the council as to the safest course of action legally. And so I think, I do apologize to anybody who listened, including Mr. Johnson, if they feel that anything I said was an error, but I'll remind the council of the timeline of how this happened. And I don't want to go back and try to correct what I said, because honestly, I don't remember exactly what I said at the meetings in December or February, so I'll stand on the record, and people can go back and listen. When this first came up in December, I was asked, you know, what can we do? At that time, there was not direction from the council to move forward with anything. They just wanted to know, is there a way that we can fix this? I answered at that time, generally, with the general legal principle of special districts, and the fact that they are governed by Prop 218. I think I talked briefly about the history of landscape lighting maintenance districts, and how they predated Proposition 218, and because of that, they are sort of in this legal gray area. And I think at the time, I said, there is a danger with funding special districts with general fund money, because it could be seen as a gift of public funds. I still stand by that. That is a true statement. The direction from council in December was to go think outside the box and see if there was a creative way to come find a solution. Again, the city attorney's office is not a policymaker, our job is to take direction from the council, so with that direction, I enlisted the help of Robin Harris at our firm, who's an expert in special assessment districts, and we thought outside the box, and we looked at the case law, we looked at landscape lighting maintenance districts, we found language that does allow the council to give a loan or to fund landscape maintenance districts. Because of their unique nature of having been formed before Prop 218, and because of the nature of the engineer reports separating out general benefits versus special benefits, that law has never been challenged. That particular portion of the code that allows the city council to use general funds to fund landscape districts is still on the books. But, and I think I said this, and this is maybe where some of the confusion came from, this is uncharted territory. There is no case law that specifically settles the question of if somebody brings a challenge to the funding using general funds to fund a landscape and lighting maintenance district, whether that challenge would be successful or not. That is why in February, my, again, safe advice to the council was to avoid any danger, it would be better to fund using general funds only those areas of a landscape district using, that are deemed to be general benefits and not special. Because of the danger that I articulated, but perhaps not very well, is that this is a loan. So because it's a loan, and the anticipation is that the money will be paid back, you can fund the special district areas as well as the general, because you are going to get that money back, paid back. So it is not a gift of public funds, it's a loan. The danger is, if the Prop 218 process doesn't work, and the landscape lighting maintenance district has no money, and the loan is never repaid to the city, does that expose the city to a challenge for having made a gift of public funds? Because then the loan, in essence, has become a gift. I don't know the answer to that question. There is no case law on point, and no amount of additional research is going to change it. Sometimes, unfortunately, a lawyer's best answer is, I don't know. But my job is to give you all the options, and to always try to steer you towards the safest course. So that's what I have attempted to do, I do apologize. This is a very wonky area. So if I was, if I confused anybody, if I appeared to be, you know, talking out of both sides of my mouth, I could see how that could appear, but remember, I am not a policymaker. I'm not making recommendations on what we should do, I'm just giving you every option. And unfortunately, I always go towards the worst possible options, because that's my job as the city attorney.
Councilman Tim, please. So let's say we table it, deny it, basically don't take any action. When does the maintenance stop over there?
The maintenance has actually continued, it's just been at that reduced rate since January 1st of 2022, and we are projecting that we do have enough budget with the current assessment revenue to maintain those services at the reduced rate through the end of this fiscal year. We're also, you know, preparing, or we did prepare, to provide those reduced level of services through '22, '23, until we can get this Prop 218 process underway.
Let's pretend 218 doesn't pass, to their concern. Explain to me then what happens?
If 218 doesn't pass, and the loan was granted, then...
No, if the loan wasn't granted?
Oh, if the loan wasn't granted, then we would pretty much continue as business as usual with the reduction of services. And services would continue to be reduced, because obviously, the revenues would stay static, but costs would go up, you know, over time. So we would just continue with what we could do with the amount of revenue we received through those same level of assessments.
And if I, if I may, Mr. Gasway, I call him Mr. Gasway, because we're both named David, raised a good point, that my statement that if the 218 assessment doesn't pass, the loan could still be repaid using the current assessment, but it would just mean that there would be absolutely no landscape maintenance for the districts while the loan is repaid. My anticipation of a challenge is if this council then decided, you know what, we don't want to do that to these districts, we're just going to write it off and not get repaid. That is the danger. So I just want to make that clear. Right, there's still a mechanism by even if the 218 process doesn't pass, you could be repaid using current assessments. But this council obviously has the ability to say, well, we're just going to forgive the loan. That, in my estimation, has some risk. That's, I want to clarify that point.
Because the LLMD is a separate entity. We're not giving it the money to the residents, we're giving it to the LLMD.
Right.
Right? Because what would happen is where I live, if this happened in Rolling Hills, I'd say, well, where I live, I want you to give us the same amount of money that you were going to give them, correct?
Right.
And so we're looking at, what, 806,000 bucks or something?
Yes.
Okay. Because what I see coming is a crapshoot when you talk about, is 218 going to pass? I've never seen a 218 fail. But I'm more concerned about the downside. Let's say, let's say it fails. All of a sudden, then you can see what's going to happen with the maintenance and lighting and... Okay, I have my answer. Thank you very much. Do you guys have your answer? I mean, pretty much?
Pretty much, you've identified now, but the point was the last presentation was.
Right, no, no, I get it. Okay, that was last time, this is today, so, all right. I'm comfortable in passing this. Thank you very much.
Okay. So the action now is going to be? We have a motion on the floor that failed.
Yeah, it's my motion to table on the floor. So I'll just close out my motion, you know, just with words like wonky, unprecedented, it's somewhat confusing. Why on earth would we rush this right now? When, on the other side of the issue, we've got residents here saying, let us engage people on this to inform them to help. They're helping us, free of charge. And that could possibly increase the prospect of 218 passing. That benefit outweighs us pushing this through tonight. That's my point. The risk benefit analysis for me is a more informed electorate makes better decisions. So I'm just asking not to table it indefinitely.
And Pam, I don't mean to interrupt. Can you give me a date? Because I agree with you, but what I'm afraid is going to happen is you keep kicking the can down the road. We're going to go right back to what got us here in the first place.
I promise you, that's not going to happen.
Give me a date.
Well, I amended my motion to say at least 30 days. Is that good enough?
You know, I would, but I would look to staff. Because I don't know what, I don't know what's, a realistic thing from staff because you say at least 30 days, and I don't know what their workload is. Could it be 45, could it be 60? And.
So if I said by 60 days, would that be good enough for you?
I'm looking at the city manager, is that doable?
We serve at your pleasure, city council, so whatever direction you give us, we will operate within.
Give us some time to work at this.
I'm okay.
Because at the last meeting, we said, we're going to do things different. We're going to have more robust, you know, community engagement. That's what we're, that's exactly what we're asking for right now. Not for an indefinite off the calendar, but give us an opportunity to work this. And that will probably increase the likelihood that we'll get it right. Because it is wonky, and it is uncharted.
Councilmember Bertani.
Yes, sir.
You convinced me.
But I just want to make sure too, though.
60 days.
And Pam, I understand, but what I, you know, we refer things to staff, and staff, and staff, and pretty soon, they're coming to the city manager saying, okay, you got this, this, and this, something's got to give. So I want a realistic timetable. If you told me six months, and I'd look at you, and it'd be like, okay?
So just one factual information that I was just told is noticing went out today? Or was approved?
The survey, so we've done some of that community engagement piece already through MBS and Civic Mike. We've sent out a survey to start that process and understand what the residents would like to level of service they'd like. We've already sent that out last week. That's going to help inform a town hall meeting that we already have scheduled and planned for May. So we're embarking on doing some of this outreach and community engagement currently, and that's our current program.
I'd like to clarify that this community engagement, though, is to engage them about the Prop 218 process and raising the assessment. It's not necessarily about this loan because what we understood from the last council meeting is that this loan was actually going to be issued. So if you're, I think this is a new request to engage the community now about this loan, which would, we would, you know, need to talk to our consultant to see how we can pivot what we're currently doing to address that before we start talking about the Prop 218 engagement. But we did have already programmed into our work plan community engagement that's going to take us through this next 16 months to get people's preferences on services, improvements, boundary lines, you know, assessment rates, all of that. But that was a, you know, a year-long process. So pivoting now to engaging about this loan would be just a little bit different.
So Pam, you think 30 days?
Let's say 60 to be safe.
60 to be safe?
60 to be safe.
All right, I'll support you.
And just to, okay.
So you're going to amend?
Mr. City Attorney, since they voted already on the one, the first motion that.
So let me make a new motion.
Okay.
And my new motion is that we table consent calendar item nine for 60 days. And at the end of those 60 days, it comes back for full council consideration.
Up to 60 days.
And can I ask for just one particular point of clarification? So is council's interest in us engaging with the residents in these districts for the purposes of the loan ahead of purposes of 218? Because in the next 60 days, I do not believe we will have the information necessary to answer some of the Prop 218 questions that may come about as a part of that. And I'm not trying to make this difficult. It's when we set off on this, I mean, we've said this is very complex. And so there's a lot of moving pieces here, there's a lot of unknowns. And so if the engagement is about the loan, we're 100%, we're ready to go. If the engagement is about the Prop 218 process in general, then I just want to set expectations that there is information that we simply won't have for residents within that 60-day period.
And I'd like to add that during that 60-day period, we'll continue to provide the services at the reduced rate, so not at the pre-January 2022 levels.
And I have one clarification. And Wonky is right. So this is only for this LLMD, it's not for the rest of them, correct? These are the ones that had the objections. So it's number three?
I believe Mr. Johnson is advocating for, you know, holding on the loan for all three of the LLMDs, not just the one that he is a resident of.
And all those three comprise consent calendar item number nine?
Correct.
That would be correct. That's, my motion is targeted to that.
Did you want to make a date certain, like May 2nd?
I think we've agreed on up to, up to 60 days.
That would be May 2nd.
Okay.
And this will be a crapshoot? Okay, all right.
And Mr. City Attorney, do I need to take a roll call vote again?
I would.
Okay. Did you have a comment, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Could we have a second?
Okay, Councilmember Bertani.
Did we get a second?
Councilmember Moy made a second. Okay, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Pendero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, Mayor.
Councilman, Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, real quick, this is directed to Mr. Johnson. So, you know, the last meeting when we talked about this, there were people that were in favor of the loan. So I would expect if we are going to have a discussion in 60 days, that some of those people will also be here. I know there hasn't been as many people as I thought that would be part of it. I would hope that it would increase the number of people by what we were doing tonight. I really do. So, you know, let's try to get more people involved then. If that's what you want, then that's what we need to see. Because I haven't seen that yet, to be honest with you. So that would convince me more, okay?
That's why I'm doubting the 218 because of the.
I understand that, thank you.
carries unanimously, thank you very much.
And so we still need to vote on the consent calendar? And there aren't any hands raised on Zoom?
Is there a motion to approve the consent? It's been moved by Councilman Tonison. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 12, new business.
Please, Madam Clerk.
First reading and introduction of ordinance 2022-03 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending Section 2.24.1 of the Fairfield Municipal Code to limit the number of absences planning commissioners are permitted within 12 months. And our presenter is Jonathan Luong, Management Analyst of Community Development.
Evening, Mayor Price, members of council. I promise I'll be very brief. This item just continues from our previous city council meeting regarding the attendance and number of allowable absences for planning commissioners. Just briefly want to note the changes, and I'm working with the city attorney to get the language really just fine tuned. First, we just identify the chairperson and secretary of the planning commission as individuals for the commissioner to give a right within 30 days upon an absentee absence, apologies. Second, just outlining the policies to notifying this commissioner when they're in violation of the attendance policy. Third, just outlining the number of days for the commissioner to appeal should they be in violation of the attendance policy. And also, the amount of business days the clerk must respond to a scheduled hearing. And last with that one is outlining the process of how the commissioner, who's in violation, could address the council, what they can do to appeal and the evidence they can provide. So that concludes that brief presentation, and I'm open for questions.
Any comments or questions?
I would make a motion to approve item 12.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
We need public comment.
Sorry. Any comments, colleagues, before we take action?
We need public comment, Mayor.
Public comments, yes.
I don't have any speaker cards, and there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. We turn then to.
Actually, I'm sorry, we should indicate it's a 6-0 vote. I don't think Councilwoman Pendero is on the dais right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
So it's 6-0.
Mr., thank you.
Okay, item 13, Resolution 2022-40 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield to adopt the City of Fairfield Emergency Operations Plan. And our presenter is Fire Deputy Chief John Sturdy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm the Deputy Fire Chief of Operations for the city. I'm also the emergency manager. I'm excited tonight to ask the council to adopt Resolution 2022-40, the city's emergency operations plan. We last adopted emergency operations plan in 2005. During the past 17 years, threats to the city and how we respond to them have evolved. In the past five years alone, the City of Fairfield has activated the Emergency Operations Center for fires, floods, weather events, civil unrest, the COVID-19 pandemic, and the Tomato Festival. All these incidents highlight the need for an updated, modern emergency operations plan. Protecting life, property, and natural resources is an inherent function of our city government. Therefore, city staff from all departments collaborating with, navigating preparedness associates to prepare a comprehensive emergency operations plan. This plan will ensure the most efficient use of resources to protect our community and its property before, during, and after natural, technological, or human-made emergencies. Some highlights of the new emergency operations plan that were addressed are common familiar disasters such as fires, civil unrest, hazardous material spills, and many other incidents. We have added modern disasters such as cyber threats, climate change, and prolonged loss of power. In addition, the plan addresses populations with disabilities and other access and functional needs, mask care and shelter, and a volunteer donation management plan. Although a plan cannot prevent disasters, actions carried out by knowledgeable and well-trained personnel can minimize the impacts of such disasters. This plan confirms our city's emergency organization assigns tasks, presents policies and general procedures, and coordinates planning with various emergency management functions utilizing the Standard Emergency Management System, or NIM, in alignment with the National Incident Management System, NIMS. This plan aims to integrate and coordinate all Fairfield city facilities and personnel into an effective team that can prevent, protect, respond to, and recover from emergencies. This emergency operations plan is an extension of the state emergency plan and the Solano County Operational Area Emergency Response Plan. It will be examined and exercised as needed and updated biannually to meet changing conditions. This plan focuses on prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any comments or questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. Councilman Moy, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chief, for putting this together. And it has been, how often should we be putting this together? I mean, it's been 17 years, 16 years plus, right?
Yes, they're supposed to be done biannually. So we're.
Biannually?
Biannually.
Okay. So we're on track now?
Yes, we're on track now. We last updated this in 2008.
In 2008, right.
Yeah, so it's been a while.
When Rick and I came on is when, and a lot of things have changed. So I appreciate this, I appreciate Chief, staff doing this. I know it's a lot of work. And we rely on you guys, we go to bed at night, you guys stay up. Appreciate you, thank you very much.
Any other comments, colleagues? Do we have any public comments?
There are no, I have no speaker cards, and there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. entertain a motion then to approve the resolution? Been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. We turn then to item 14, please, Madam Clerk.
Solid Waste, Recyclable Materials, and Organic Waste Collection and Disposal Agreement, Introduction and Overview. And our presenter is Public Works Management Analyst Cory Beavers.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Cory Beavers, and I am Managing Analyst for the City of Fairfield Public Works Department. The item for council requires no action and is for informational purposes only. Tonight, I will provide an update regarding the city's solid waste franchise agreement with Republic Services and the impacts of Senate Bill 1383. I'll begin by giving a brief overview of the events that have previously occurred, what we are trying to achieve with the new franchise agreement, some of the main franchise steps and negotiation points, and will conclude with next steps. I will also describe a couple of options regarding rates that staff has evaluated and provide recommendations. Should the council have any questions related to the presentation or the agreement, I am joined this evening with Kevin Flanagan, Division Manager of Republic Services. So brief background. On September 6, 2011, the city council approved the franchise agreement between the City of Fairfield and Republic Services through their subsidiary, Solano Garbage Company. This franchise agreement granted Republic the exclusive right to collect, transport, and dispose of all solid waste, recyclables, and organic waste within the city limits. The agreement also transferred the majority of street sweeping services and requirements to Republic. The 2011 agreement had a term length of five years with an additional five-year option. The city and Republic executed Amendment 1 to the franchise agreement on April 26, 2016. Per the terms of the original 2011 agreement, the city was required to offer Republic a five-year extension. In addition to the five-year extension, Republic further requested that the term be extended out to November 2025. In exchange, the city requested that Republic relocate their storage site outside the heart of Fairfield. This is the most current version of the agreement. However, due to changes in law since 2016, namely Senate Bill 1383, the city and Republic have since begun contract negotiations again. So what is Senate Bill 1383? Senate Bill 1383, more commonly known as the Organic Waste Reductions Law, was signed into law by former Governor Jerry Brown September 2016, and regulations went into effect on January 1, 2022. Senate Bill 1383 is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted in the state of California in the last 30 years, and has numerous impacts to local jurisdictions, haulers, residents, businesses, and disposal facilities. Senate Bill 1383 has several major impacts to the city, including, but not limited to: One, providing mandatory organic waste recycling to all residential and commercial customers; Two, requiring the city to establish and implement an edible food recovery program; Three, requiring the city to adopt an ordinance or other enforceable mechanism for compliance; Four, requiring the city to procure organic waste products and recyclable paper products; Five, requiring the city to conduct outreach and education. Senate Bill 1383 authorizes CalRecycle to penalize noncompliant jurisdictions, up to $10,000 per day per violation at their discretion. While the city has made significant progress towards solid waste goals and compliance, Senate Bill 1383 requirements warranted changes to the city's franchise agreement with Republic Services. So to begin preparing for these Senate Bill 1383 changes and requirements, city council and staff have taken several key steps. I'll very briefly recap each of these actions. Resolution 2019-56 authorized the city manager to execute a consultant services agreement with R3 Consulting to prepare a solid waste legislative compliance plan and assist with potential negotiations with Republic. Resolution 2020-100 made amendments to the city's construction and demolition agreements pertaining to SB 1383 requirements. At the city council workshop, the Public Works Department highlighted Senate Bill 1383 compliance as a key initiative for 2021 and indicated that contract negotiations were necessary. On April 20, a special meeting was held, and Public Works staff and R3 Consulting presented additional information about SB 1383. At this meeting, staff discussed that an operational performance review of Republic Services was planned. On July 20, ordinance 2021-13 was adopted and resulted in amendments to Chapter 9 of the city's municipal code relating to organic waste and solid waste as a whole. This ordinance also established mandatory subscription for organic waste generators and ratified other SB 1383 requirements. And at the last city council meeting, council approved Resolution 2022-27, which allowed the city to apply for CalRecycle grant funding to further support SB 1383 grant program requirements. So, as mentioned on the last slide, to begin preparing for the franchise agreement and negotiations, the City of Fairfield and R3 Consulting Group conducted performance review of Republic. The performance review had three main objectives. One was to determine if Republic had complied with the requirements of the current franchise agreement. Two was to assess the accuracy of Republic's billings and remittance payments. And three was to provide recommendations for continued improvement. The city and R3 checked over 200 franchise agreements, conducted an operational performance analysis, and performed a billing audit. The results of the performance review were satisfactory, and continued SB 1383 negotiations were warranted. So with all that background complete and the other key components in place, staff, R3, the city attorney's office began negotiating with Republic Services on several key business terms for the new franchise agreement. These terms are summarized in the table shown on the slide, and for the sake of time, I won't touch on every item, but will point out a few major points. If approved, the new franchise agreement will commence immediately, and the term length will run through November 2035. Like the previous franchise agreement, one five-year option will be provided to Republic to extend the total agreement out till 2040. Street sweeping services will continue to be provided by Republic for the duration of this agreement. The city will continue to receive payments from Republic in the form of franchise fees and vehicle impact fees. In addition, all single and multifamily households will receive kitchen food waste pails. Republic will continue to provide solid waste services for residents and businesses, and will assist the city in SB 1383 programs to ensure SB 1383 compliance with CalRecycle. The full agreement will be ready for council review at the March 15 city council meeting. Now, I'll invite Kevin Flanagan with Republic Services to talk more about SB 1383 operational and programmatic changes and its impact.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's good to be here. Thank you for listening to me this evening. So Kevin Flanagan, I'm the Division Manager with Republic Services. As Cory mentioned, I'm going to cover a few of the key services that we're going to add as a result of 1383. So as he mentioned, the expanded commercial organics program, this is a service that is obviously required with 1383. And with that, we would provide carts to each commercial business. We'd deliver those. And as a result of that additional service, we would add a couple of collection routes out on the streets. And with that, we would purchase two new vehicles, collection vehicles, that is, and hire drivers to run those routes as well. As we've learned about 1383, one of the big goals is to divert organic material from the landfills, and those routes would do just that, so that volume would be sent to processing for compost. On the residential side, you know, I mean, for the most part, the big changes are what residents are putting in each of the cans. But we will purchase food waste pails for each residential customer. We'll deliver those as well. And that also includes the multifamily units that would receive those. 1383 also requires jurisdictions to procure compost on an annual basis. This is a calculation based on pounds per capita. It could be a pretty significant expense, but our proposal includes a component to help solve for that, and to also offer to, or host, two compost giveaway events where we would give that compost to residents in the form of bag compost or loose compost. As far as the outreach and education, I'll keep this really high level. We could probably spend an hour at least on it. But with our proposal, we've submitted to staff, you know, a proposal that meets their requirements as well as 1383's. But with CalRecycle and the legislation change, there's an extensive amount of reporting that's required, monitoring as well as auditing, and site visits that we have to do each and every year. So to solve for that, we've proposed to add two additional staff in the form of recycling coordinators. That would be specific to the City of Fairfield to meet that obligation. Other areas, you know, improved marketing and outreach, we'd obviously update all of our collateral, provide additional collateral, and work in partnership with the city to, you know, be in person at events and things of that nature to improve the outreach and education around 1383. In partnership with the city as well, we'd be supporting and contributing to the Edible Food Recovery Program, which Cory mentioned earlier. And the last thing is really, with all the additional reporting, we would be funding a cloud-based system that would help track and help us with the reporting to CalRecycle. So the last thing I'll touch on is the fleet replacement. I mentioned early on that we'd purchase two new collection vehicles for the commercial organics part. But also, over a three-year period, starting in 2023, we would replace our entire fleet that's responsible for the collection in the City of Fairfield. The timing works well with where we are now with this negotiation and our fleet coming up in age of retirement. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Cory, and I'll stick around for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. So, rates, of course, are another major component of any franchise agreement. As Kevin mentioned, Senate Bill 1383 requires several substantial operating and programmatic changes. These changes resulted in an increase to all residential and commercial rates. The city and Republic have worked in good faith to calculate rates that would support new SB 1383 programs, but remain highly competitive and some of the lowest in the greater Bay Area. Staff has presented two rate options for council to review and provide direction should they wish. As you can see, option one and option two are very similar to one another. The key difference being that in option one, rates will increase in calendar year 2022 by 10.63%, and over the course of the agreement, rates would increase by a maximum annual CPI adjustment of 4.5%. In option two, rates would increase in calendar year 2022 by 8%, and in calendar year 2023, rates would increase by an additional 3.25% in addition to the annual CPI adjustment. Option two effectively makes the rate increase spread out over two years, whereas option one has it increase all at once. Currently, staff recommends option two. Very briefly, I'll discuss some of the outreach and education that the city and Republic performed regarding Senate Bill 1383. At the core of this effort was our Fairfield Goes Green campaign, which consisted of an online social media campaign, podcast, videos, flyers, and displays. I want to personally thank our mod team for all their help with this. In addition to the Fairfield Goes Green campaign, the city and Republic jointly produced and sent mailers to all residential and commercial customers, conducted in-person site visits, and held various meetings and events over the course of the last year. These events included town hall-style meetings, presentations with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and various other outreach at city events. We will continue our outreach over the course of this year and the following. So what's next? As mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, no action is required by city council tonight. However, at the March 15 city council meeting, staff will recommend that the council execute the franchise agreement between the city and Republic. Once the franchise agreement is in place, the city will begin rolling out the other SB 1383 program changes, such as the Edible Food Recovery Program and commercial organic recycling to all. The city and Republic will continue to provide outreach and education to residents and businesses about these changes, and will begin monitoring compliance and conducting enforcement as necessary later this year. Overall, the city has received excellent service for the current term of the franchise agreement with Republic, and Republic has met their obligations to the city. The new franchise agreement would keep the city's collection rates at a region-wide low for the entire term of the contract, ensure compliance with CalRecycle and SB 1383 requirements, provide residents and businesses with new solid waste benefits, and provides additional revenue to the city's general fund and solid waste program. While no action is required at this time, staff again anticipates taking the new franchise agreement to city council on March 15. Should the council have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Cory? Okay. Any comments or questions for Kevin?
Not for Kevin, just one comment. Good presentation, Cory, and thank you, Kevin, for clarifying it. I know this is happening in every city right now, and I know the rates are going up in every city. So it's good to see that we're still going to be on the low end, hopefully, as far as all the Bay Area is concerned, so.
Yeah, and on that, if you'd like, I did do a quick comparison of residential rates between us and some of our neighboring jurisdictions. So as you can tell, this would be the option two that was recommended. And as you can tell, even with the rate adjustment, the City of Fairfield still maintains some of these lowest rates.
Real quick, just to double check, you know, there were two options up there. Are there any questions about those options or any preference by city council? Option two, got it?
I think it's pretty obvious that-- Option two, colleagues? Let us pursue that. And I want to acknowledge the fact that Republic Services continues to provide reduced garbage service for Travis Air Force Base, because that's such a critical element out there. And I think all of us benefit economically from the impacts that Travis Air Force Base has financially upon all of Solano County as well as Northern California. So, thank you very much. Want to give any directions, colleagues?
Mr. Mayor, can you ask for a public comment? Check for public comment.
I will, one second here.
I don't have any speaker cards.
Any direction you want to give, colleagues? Public comments? Do we have any request to speak, Congress?
I do not, and there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We turn now to item number 15, please. Madam Clerk?
Item 15, Allen Witt Court Renovation Project Update. And our presenters are Public Works Director Paul Koschel and Director of Parks and Recreation, Christina Chamberlain.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Paul Koschel, Public Works, and I'm joined here by Christina Chamberlain, our Parks and Rec Director. And we're back to provide a brief update on the project to repair the existing courts, sports courts at Allen Witt Park. And we're looking for a council direction as we're wrapping up the plans and preparing the project for a bit. So here's a project timeline and with some milestones that we've completed on the project to date. So as a reminder, at the December 21 council meeting, you approved a design contract with Calendar and Associates, and you allocated budget funding to allow us to move forward with the project. And as described at that meeting, part of the project's scope involved a public outreach process with the sports user groups, the tennis and pickleball user groups, to help us determine the appropriate amount of each type of court to best suit the community's needs. After the holidays, the design kicked off, and it's moved at a pretty quick pace since then. On January 20, a virtual meeting was held with the sports user groups. On the 31st of January, we provided a update through the council weekly newsletter. On February 10, a final layout was determined based on input received from the user groups. And then as a reminder, on February 15, the council requested that staff bring back and agendaize this item for additional discussion, and that brings us here to today. So on this slide, you'll see the preliminary court layout. This layout was used as a baseline for discussion during the user group outreach meeting, as well as it was provided and included in the council weekly update. It includes, as you can see, the four tennis courts being remaining, three of the courts being reprogrammed for pickleball, and one court being reprogrammed for footsall. Regarding footsall, one of the existing tennis courts is already currently being used for footsall. Additionally, during the 2017 Allen Witt Master Plan Outreach and Development Process, a year-round soccer facility was identified as a need for the community, and so a footsall court was incorporated into the final Allen Witt Master Plan. For the pickleball courts, one of the primary decisions to make was whether to orient the courts in the east-west direction, with three pickleball courts per tennis court for a total of nine, as you see on the slide here, or to orient them in a north-south direction, which would allow for four pickleball courts per tennis court for a total of 12 pickleball courts. And this is where input and guidance from the pickleball user group was invaluable. And based on those discussions, the court orientation was changed. And at this point, I'll hand it over to Christina to walk us through that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Paul. So the next slide represents our proposed final layout, again with the feedback from our stakeholders and staff's recommendation. So we did modify the rotation of the pickleball courts, which allowed actually three additional, so be a total of 12 of the three courts, providing 12 pickleball courts, and then continuing with the plan and ask for, including a footsall court. This would be allowing us to have independent use of those court options or that recreational activity, rather than some of the strategic planning in other communities is that you do multi-use courts by striping them with all the different types of courts. And so one of the things that we heard was, we want independent courts and not multi-use courts. So I feel that this is a tremendous win for our community if the council should move forward with this proposal. forward with this proposal. So then, just as a reminder too, this provides the court amenities to meet the current needs of the community based on the available area right now, that we're looking at just those eight courts. As Paul mentioned, footsall is one of the existing uses for one of the courts. And a reminder too, that this really serves as a temporary solution for a longer-term need. And so through the leadership of Councilmember Tonison, we were able to do a temporary renovation. There's still opportunity with the Allen Witt Master Plan to review what was already proposed in those future phases, to amend some of those. We have time to do that, and in a more meaningful way for a permanent solution to try to meet the community needs on all of those. And then I also want to put a plug out that we're going to be starting community outreach with a new park design, the Matt Garcia Park, which is a 50-acre parcel near the One Lake. So that's a blank slate for us to engage with all of our stakeholders and look at some of the recreational gaps that we have here in Fairfield, to really address those at that time as well. So with that, just a reminder too, that based on the final proposal, if we were to move forward with that tonight, the schedule would continue to have our proposed completion of the project by July or end of June, early July. But we're also wanting direction if we wanted to look at some other design revisions that may delay, just, you know, depending on how complex, maybe another week or two, that might pull that further out into the future. So that concludes our presentation, and we're open to comments and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, going to try to be brief, but I probably won't be. So we started this out on September 7th. The initial request was four pickleball courts, four tennis courts, turning four tennis courts into four pickleball courts. On November 2nd, we came back again, and I've watched all the tapes. We gave, from the, all of the tapes that I watched, we gave clear direction to four pickleball courts, four tennis courts. On December 2nd, we met again. Same thing, no mention of any change, in my opinion, clear direction. So looking at your diagrams that you're giving us now, which came out on, I believe, Friday, was when the final draft was, you have changed this around with the footsall court. I think footsall court's a great idea. I think it's a little short-sighted that we're not using it for multi-purposes. I've done some research on that, too. You can have dodgeball, you can have volleyball, a lot of that is played out there. I drive by that park, probably gonna, okay, I'll just say it, I drive by that park 15 to 20 times a week. It's right around the corner from my house. I drive my district all the time. I have yet to see footsall being played. I see a lot of soccer being played, I see a lot of volleyball being played, I see a lot of basketball being played, and I'm cool with footsall. That's fine. I would like to see that made into, you know, maybe even, again, if the numbers pan out, putting the walls up. When I was 17 years old in 1978, I worked for the city, and we put up the walls in the back of the tennis courts so that the tennis players could warm up. I'd like to see that. I'd like to see you get a lot of uses out of the footsall court, not just footsall. The big change that I would like to see, we're doing this for a reason. We set out on this quest for, you know, me and the mayor started out with going out to these tennis courts and meeting with the ladies. Obviously, we've met with the pickleball players on numerous occasions. What I would ask my colleagues to consider is making the front four courts the pickleball courts, still doing the north to south. So moving this, I'm pointing at this that nobody can see. So bringing down the tennis courts, making it three tennis courts, four pickleball courts up front, like we had discussed earlier. And the reason we're doing this is to try and draw something new, to try and bring something to this town where we're going to have 200, 300, 400 people on a consistent basis showing up for pickleball. Adidas just opened up pickleball, they're going to do shoes, they're going to do rackets. Pickleball is growing as we speak. When we're doing this, again, our initial direction was different than what I'm looking at on this screen. But when we were doing this, it's a three- to five-year plan. It's not a, you know, it looks like we're going to wipe out the bottom half of the courts regardless when we get to Phase 7. And I know the footsall court was part of Phase 7. So I would be recommending that we make a change on that, move the pickleball courts, have four of them up front, have the three tennis courts down below, and turn the footsall, keep the footsall court as is, but you turn it into a multi-use, because it's only striping, turn it into a multi-use court. Dodgeball, hockey, volleyball, there's a lot of uses for that. So that would be my recommendation. The pickleball community came out in droves for this. So I'd like to see the four courts moved up front. That would be my request.
Mr. Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, my question is for Councilman Tonison. Why?
Because I think there's more of a draw for the pickleball, the tournaments. With Fairfield, we have...
I mean, why do you want to switch it?
To have, so that we have four pickleball courts at their current direction or...
So you're saying, so four pickleball courts and three tennis courts?
Three tennis courts. And then, because the pickleball courts, you're only doing lines. The pickleball courts, we're using the tennis courts right now at North Park in Vacaville. They just restriped those, but they can use the tennis courts as...
Right. I don't want to be argumentative, I'm just asking, like, and maybe this is a question for Christina. So are the tennis courts being used on a regular basis?
We have a couple of groups that are out there. We have the ladies, they call themselves the ladies, that are out there twice a week in the mornings, and then we have a couple other groups. We actually have a contract provider that does tennis lessons. Of course, some of our programming in general has been a little bit modified over the last year and a half with the pandemic. We were actually prepared to do more formal footsall with a gentleman who we also contract with, Just for Kick Soccer. So part of what is the reason behind them not being used is exactly the point that was raised, is how bad of disrepair they are for any use. So that's what we've been hearing back, and so I think that was also one of the prompts of, they're in such bad shape, could we do something temporary now that would, you know, provide actual uses? And whatever it is, we want it. We want to activate our parks, and we want to offer diverse opportunities for our community. And we look to you for your leadership tonight.
Honney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is whether the schematic that we have before us now is a departure from the city council's clear direction in the last meeting where we discussed this?
Well, I think that's up for debate, and we're not looking to debate that.
I'd just like an answer to the question.
At the last, on December 21st, staff made a recommendation that you would approve the city manager, authorize the city manager to make amendment to Calendar's contract to do design work. And as a part of that recommendation, it was stated that we would go and work with the stakeholder groups, including Parks and Recreation, as well as the pickleball group and the tennis group, in order to come up with an optimal design. And so that is what has happened since, based on the recommendation. Council moved that recommendation, and that is what staff has done. So, you know, I think...
Scott, let me ask, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
So Scott, I mean, Councilman Tonison, can I ask you to address my question, which is whether the schematic before us now is a departure from the council's prior direction?
It's a departure from our initial direction.
And exactly what is a departure?
The departure is the sport court, footsall court, whatever you want to call it. We had, our direction was four tennis courts, four pickleball courts.
That's our direction?
That was our initial direction, and that was on, on the meeting on the November 2nd, we talked about Phase 7. That was the only time that footsall ever came up, which, again, I'm not against footsall. That's the first time that it ever came up. And the response from Ryan at that time was, there's no anticipated timeframe for Phase 7. Phase 7 is the one that had all of the sport courts and, you know, again, all stuff that I like, but that was not our direction, no.
So I guess my question back to staff is, what informed a departure from the city council's direction on this? I don't think that we've...
Well, if somehow we missed that there was clear direction for four tennis courts to be converted, then certainly I will stand here and apologize in public that we missed that. On the 21st, the recommendation was to work with the user groups to determine an optimal layout. That's what staff has done. Public Works, I mean, I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation staff, in recognizing the 2017 master plan and the feedback that was received at that time for footsall, saw an opportunity to recommend that as a part of the final design that's before you tonight, the footsall would be included. And so, again, if we missed that there was clear direction, going back to, I think, Mr. Tonison, you mentioned September meeting, I mean, if we missed that there was clear direction for four tennis courts to be converted, then my apologies.
It was the direction three different times. And again, I'm not against footsall, but I'm beating a dead horse now.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, so, and I'd have to apologize to Mr. Tonison here, that we're talking pickleball courts and tennis courts, and he gave it an arbitrary look. And I guess my question would be to you now is, is this acceptable to you? We talked about direction, and I'm listening to sports courts. I'll be honest, it's like...
I would like to see four pickleball courts out front, three tennis courts down below. So it's a minor change. We keep in, we keep in the sport court, footsall court, whatever you want to call it. I think we should have more uses for that.
Okay, so then my question would be is, because I remember talking about this, the money issue, if this is something, because I was concerned that we'd put it in and then drive a bulldozer through it in a couple of years. So how difficult would it be to do what Councilman Tonison just said, is you just reverse it? Courts are courts, I don't care what kind of lines you put on them, right?
Yeah, the change is, that sort of change on the plans, since we haven't put it out to bid and we haven't started to work, is not that difficult. It would take us a week or two to implement those design changes, and so it pushes off the overall completion schedule by those a couple weeks. So instead of, say, end of June, beginning of July, maybe mid-July, so just to give you a sense of the schedule.
Okay, is that, is that good?
Yes.
I mean, because you were the one that spearheaded this, we're going to get, we're going to get, we're going to get pickleball, we're going to get tennis, because you spearheaded it. Thank you for your leadership. I think people are going to get what they want. It's not going to cost us pretty much any more money, so we can vote on this, put this to bed, and everybody will be happy.
Have one comment here from the vice mayor, please.
Direction or whatever, so.
Did I make a...
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll talk after that.
I just had a question regarding, so if we're taking away a tennis court, is it, are we taking it away, or can you play pickleball on tennis?
You can play pickleball on tennis, and vice versa.
Okay, so we're not taking away a tennis court?
We are taking away a tennis court. So it's either take away a tennis court or take away a pickleball court. Pickleball was what is driving this, so I'd rather see the tennis court.
So just a point of clarification, the way that we have designed and set up the pickleball courts with, if you can, it's hard to make it out, but in between the pickleball courts, you see like a horizontal line, that's fencing, that's permanent fencing that we're proposing to provide a barrier between the courts to help with play. And so the way we have, there are ways that you can design it to have it multi-use, but again, based on some of the feedback we received and looking at designs, we implemented as single use for pickleball. Now, the footsall court could be designed as multi-use, and that could be the opportunity to say tennis, footsall, yeah, multi-use, and so maybe...
And you could have a warm-up court there, too, yes.
So...
Thank you, because I was just questioning, because I know if we're talking to all the stakeholders and they wanted four tennis courts, and they're going to take one away, I just wanted to make sure that we're not taking anything away.
Yeah, so we could, with council's direction, we, and I'll maybe confirm with Christina here behind me, is we could make the footsall court a multi-use court.
Okay.
But again, I think if you ask all the sports users, they would prefer, you know, a specific use for their purpose, right? So maybe you're compromising to make everybody happy.
For the purpose of tennis, or for the purpose of...
Well, I think if you would ask, maybe I'm making an assumption, but if you were to ask footsall players, for example, if they would prefer a dedicated use for footsall or a multi-use court, my assumption would be that they would prefer footsall only.
Correct. And I'll speak to that, too. I mean, I know that my colleagues are saying they've never seen anyone play footsall, but that doesn't mean it doesn't get played. And I have personal, I know people within my own family, actually, I had no idea they played footsall until I brought it up at dinner, they're like, oh, yeah, we play that game. And they, so like my brother, he uses that court, him and his friends use that court to play footsall. And the one thing he did mention was the posts that are, the tennis court posts that they get in the way of the game. So, yeah, that's why I was just wondering with regards to what, how specific these courts are going to be.
Yeah, and I think maybe Christina, you could clarify. I believe with the court that's being used for footsall now, some, you know, some of the users over time have made modifications to the tennis court to allow them, you know, to allow the play more easily.
Yeah, and I think at the end of the day, I mean, we go back to the, all eight of those could be moved into multi-use. And so, again, part of the feedback, as we've stated, is that those individuals, tennis players who actually wanted 12 courts, I'll put that out there, prefer to have their independent striping with no multi-use.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Councilman Tonison, for your passion on this issue, obviously. Okay. You know, I don't have a problem with the footsall court at all, to be honest with you. Just to follow up on what Councilwoman Pandora said, you know, I think, you know, we always talk about inclusion in our city and who we are, okay? And this is a perfect example of including, you know, our young people that like to play that sport. And, you know, if possible, if we could change it around, you know, where, you know, okay, maybe there'll be other sports that can be played on that. I don't have a problem with just, at this point, leaving it as a footsall court, and then, you know, seeing what happens from there, because I think it is important that as a council, we're inclusive here. So that's just my two cents.
And I, that point of view, too. I think it's really essential that that segment of our population has an opportunity to engage in the things that they love and do so well. And I'm reminded, Councilwoman Bertani, of the volleyball tournament, the international volleyball tournament at Allen Witt Park and the gymnasium, and we had an Olympic volleyball player there, and she was just a breath of fresh air, and she was so excited about what was happening. And I can see pickleball becoming the same sort of phenomenon in the city of Fairfield.
Yeah, not to beat a dead horse, he wants them flipped. You said it's not going to be a problem in changing them. And if I'm driving somewhere, I'm in a Chevy, yeah, I'd like to be in a Cadillac, but Chevy's going to get me there, right? And if it's striping, so where we can accommodate footsall, we can, we need 12 pickleball courts for tournaments. And let me ask one more question, I'm afraid to, but can you turn a footsall court into a tennis court based on just striping?
We would stripe differently, so when you look at the footsall, I mean, it just gets convoluted with the more striping you have on there. So it gets a little bit modified for both uses, so they're not fully striped, but it's more the boundaries. So yes, and we can do that with any of them, honestly. And I will just share that we do provide our stakeholder pickleball with access to our gymnasium, and we have set up courts in there as well for them.
All right, got it. So I'm going to get there in a Chevy or Cadillac, so I don't have a problem. I'm going to get there. I'm going to get there. So then, what I would say is, you guys did a good job. Councilman Tonason wants them flipped, if it doesn't seem to be that big of a, of an issue. The futsal court, you can make it multi-use, but pretty much for futsal, right? It's just striping? And, and if doesn't come to pass, we can change it. It's just striping, correct? Paul, I'm kind of looking at you guys.
That is an option, just to have it striped and no other amenities out there for a full court, is what I'm saying. There would be other...
All right. You know, we could look at long-term, too, Chuck, because that's why I say leave it as a futsal court, because, you know, we're talking about long-term, what we're going to do in the park. So for now, I think that's, this plan's good.
All right.
Councilwoman White, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to throw out there that what Vice Mayor Vaccaro talked about with the Hispanic population, it is the largest group that we have in our city and growing. And so, yeah, we need to think about those things. And along those lines, and talking about the use of courts out there, when, when will the, the basketball courts have the lighting? Because there's a lot of folks that, is that going to be fixed soon? Or doing it all at one time?
Yeah, I, I think I have a couple of backup slides. So the, so the basketball courts, let's see the phasing, is a part of Phase 7. And so there's no timeline yet for that, as the council members have, have mentioned earlier.
Okay.
We are, as part of the tennis court renovation project we're talking about now...
Yeah.
Going to be repairing and replacing the lighting within those courts, because those are, you know, are needed. We don't have plans at this time to do anything with the basketball courts that isn't part of the project's scope.
Okay.
As well as the lighting, lighting is not included for, for, for the basketball courts.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments, Madam Clerk?
I do see that one hand is raised on Zoom.
Yes, we have, standby, let's see, we do have George Kennedy. And George, feel free to unmute.
Thank you.
Oops, still can't hear you yet, George. Let's see. Standby. Yeah, we still can't hear you, George. You tried your, it looks like you're unmuted, too. Yeah, standby, I'm just going to bring you back in, and... Okay, we'll try again, George. Feel free to unmute now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. I had to put, I put earbuds in, my, my computer mic's not working, sorry about that. So, council members, Mr. Mayor, thanks for hearing me out tonight. Sorry, I'm on a business trip, on the other side of the country, so I couldn't be there in person. But I wanted to talk about this. I, I think, you know, I, I would like to see the courts flipped as well. And most specifically, the reason for is, back in November, when we really talked, and Councilmember Tim talked about having, you know, more people playing at the courts, it would, uh, keep some of the more nefarious activities that go on at the park, maybe move them away from that area. And since pickleball court, four courts to a tennis court, you'd have four times as many people playing at any one point in time, it would add, in my mind, greater safety, because there's great, would be then greater awareness with those courts being used in front in the parking lot. So I think for overall safety for the park and for everybody, having the most amount of people closest to the parking lot is a safer alternative. When I, when we go there and play on certain night, I see, just because, as you all know, I work with airlines and stuff, if you see something, say something. I watch cars come every, every night, the same car, parks for 15, 20 minutes, and then meanders away. So I, I just think having those courts in front is, is a best alternative for everybody in the city. The other thing I like to talk about is, is some of this scheduling, and I talked to David a little bit, David called me up for my last comments, and I appreciate that, David, thank you. But we had our meeting, kind of, you know, didn't feel we were listened to, and David explained to me, well, we did listen to you. I said, but there's no communication. And I think even one of the earlier agenda items tonight, the failure to communicate to everybody is, is still very lacking within the city. And it was noted that on 210, a redesign was done, and here, I'm one of the stakeholders in that meeting, and called the city, say, hey, we're supposed to have this meeting. And I find, I see the first layout of this plan tonight. And even though I was given assurances by David twice today and last, a week and a half ago, without seeing it, why is there, why has there been such secrecy about this? I mean, you can, you cannot over-communicate in this world, but under-communication causes nothing but grief for staff, the city, and your residents. Half your residents want to be over-communicated. And that, that's this whole thing with me. Because in, in some ways, you know, when we all went to that stakeholders' meeting, it was USTA and the pickleball group, USAPA. So those were the only stakeholders that were, were at that meeting, and, and it was a short meeting, and, and that's why I was a little disappointed in the whole thing. But, you know, I'm willing to answer any questions. I think pickleball, you know, 12, you know, 12, having 12 to 16 courts would be able to think much bigger tournaments.
George, please conclude.
Sure. So having, having more courts, larger tournaments, bring more people into town, which means more, more money for the businesses in, in our, in our city. Thank you very much for all the effort everybody's putting into this.
Thank you. We turn now to public hearings, item number 16, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Pandoro?
Oh, I thought, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just had a question.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. So I just want to make sure that if we do switch it, that the futsal court remains a futsal court, not a multi-use. If that's okay with my colleagues, I just think that if we're looking at this court and we're talking about inclusivity, then it needs to stay. Okay, thank you.
That is the direction, yes. Okay.
So I'll make the motion?
Well, yeah. It's, it's direction, but I would, I would appreciate clarification so that we don't find ourselves in this situation again. So what I heard, if, if I'm hearing correctly, what I heard was, the, where the red courts are now, now, shown now as the tennis courts, those would instead be 12 pickleball courts and one futsal court. And then on the south side of the park, where currently the pickleball courts and the futsal court is being shown, would be four tennis courts. That's, that's what the conversation I'm hearing about being flipped.
No, no.
Okay.
The, the, the red are going to be four pickleball courts. They're all going to be pickleball courts.
Four pickleball courts or 16 pickleball courts?
16 pickleball courts.
16 pickleball courts, okay.
Bottom three are going to be three tennis courts and a futsal court. And if you want to make it multi-use, if you don't, futsal's fine. Futsal. Futsal.
Okay. So it's a reduction to three tennis courts?
Correct.
Okay. That, that helps, thank you, if that's the clarification I needed.
Okay.
Are we finished on that item now?
Yeah. As long as, as long as staff understands me, because I'm actually paying attention this time about foosball and pickle and...
We're clear, thank you.
Okay, Ida.
Okay, colleagues, now we turn to public hearings, item number 16.
Continued public hearing and first reading an introduction of ordinance 2022-05 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending Chapter 12B of the Fairfield Municipal Code to modify the hours of One Lake Park. And our presenter is management analyst Jonathan Luong.
Evening Mayor Price, members of the City Council, another brief item, I promise. The city is, the city is just seeking to amend the, the One Lake Park hours. At present, it's stated as park hours are a half hour before sunrise to half hour after sunset. So to be in compliance, compliance with our agreement with the developer at the One Lake Park, we're looking to change it to 4:00 AM to 10:00 PM closing. And I'm open to any questions.
Any questions, colleagues?
Say the closing again, please.
Oh, the, the park hours?
Yes.
It would be from 4:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
4:00 AM.
And that was, yes, and that was offered by the developers.
Okay.
Yeah, we confirmed with them, they're okay with that, yeah.
Yeah, a little, I, I can just step in with some clarification. The 4:00 AM to 10:00 PM is a little different than our standard park hours, but because One Lake, the, the park at One Lake, surrounding the lake, is a little bit of a unique situation where we have a, a maintenance agreement with the HOA that does the maintenance, and so they're the ones that requested these hours.
I have a quick question about it, if I may.
Councilwoman White, please.
So who's going to patrol at 4:00 in the morning over there? What I mean is public safety. What's the plan? Because 4:00 in the morning, what happens at 4:00 in the morning? On the lake row, and I want to know what happens at 4:00 in the morning? Uh-uh, I'm, I'm asking what...
I mean, I, I think the concern was because there's a one-mile trail around the lake, and that's within the park, if the park were closed early in the morning, residents then don't have access, you know, legally, right, to go out and utilize the, the lake and the, and the trail around the lake, as well as access on the water.
At 4:00?
Yes, yes, at 4:00.
If I can, so during early conversations with the developer, when they brought this issue up, that is what, what the city manager described. Because of, it, because they've included lighting in the area and see that as a, as an amenity for the community, they wanted to be able to allow residents to use the lake, say, say for like an early morning jog, for example. That's the example that they used.
Okay.
So before getting ready for work, they want to go for a jog around the lake, they can't do it under our normal ordinance, under our current ordinance.
Right.
But this provides that exception, so that at One Lake, they can use it off-hours.
At 4:00? Oh, okay.
And then similarly, in the evening, right, if you wanted to go for an evening stroll.
I, I get the evening thing. I, and you know, I, I would take like at 5:00, but y'all are smarter than I am. I just am wondering about, really about the public safety of that, what, the lighting that's out there? I've been out there. Is it bright enough and safe enough for a, a woman to go out there jogging by herself at 4:00? I'm ser...
I mean, I believe that's personal choice, right? If, if someone feels safe enough or not, obviously, if someone felt unsafe and called 911, then police department will respond.
Okay. I'm just raising it here so I can, because I can and because I want to. And then I'm concerned, number one, with public safety. So I don't want to hear about women being hurt out there, or men, or anybody else. All right. Thank you.
I will now open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers on this item, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance that's been moved by Councilman Tim, seconded by Councilwoman Pandoro, Bertani. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And there is, Mr. City Manager has a couple of quick comments he wants to make before we adjourn.
Yeah, so because our staff is really good, they have actually double-checked our investment portfolio already, and we do not have any investments in Russia or Russian companies. So we will continue with the direction from council, but at this point in time, the, the city's investment funds do not include any Russian assets.
Amen. Thank you very much, staff, that was awesome. And the mayor will go ahead and do the letter to our state senator and then all of those other entities. But we're clean, I like it, thank you.
And we will be adjourning in memory of Dr. Mitchell. And do whatever you can, in whatever ways that are legal, to make certain that the Russians do not decimate the Ukraine. Thank you very much, we are adjourned. Good night.